Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 22nd, 2018 Meeting of the Board of Education. I'm Kate Borninski. I want to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day weekend coming up and wanted to let you know that Ms. Merritt is at the Honors Night Ceremony at Plymouth High School, but she will be joining us as soon as she can. And one of our board members is not able to make it tonight. The other one is coming from the airport and should be here very soon. So at this time, I would like Ms. Anssey to please introduce the staff. If, oh, I'm sorry. You know, that's right, we should do that.
I'll let you go first.
Thank you, I'm getting ahead of myself as usual. Okay, I would like the board to introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out tonight.
Patty McCoy, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Anupam Chugsidhu.
And I'm Patricia Mullen, welcome.
Okay, now, please introduce the staff.
Before I introduce myself, I'm going to introduce Charlie Jones, who's behind the camera, and also Liz Adams, who's the Superintendent's Assistant. I'm Pam Esty, I'm interim Chief Finance and Operations Officer, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Liz Vertanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Good evening, I'm Mike Bender, I'm the Chief Academic Officer.
Hey, everyone, Nick Brandon, Director of Communications.
Good evening, Heather Colombo, President, Education Association.
At this time, would everyone please stand for the pledge? And Mr. Whitlock, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the Agenda and the approval of the Consent Agenda. This is Action Item 1805-146. I need a motion on this, please.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the Agenda and approve the Consent Agenda, Action Item 1805-146.
Support.
Okay, the motion was made by Member Mullen and supported by Member Brooks. Dr. Vertanian, oh, is there any discussion from any of the board members on this? Okay, Dr. Vertanian Gibbs, do you want to take us through the Consent Agenda?
Sure. Good evening. The Consent Agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together, which includes retirements and resignations. The Consent Agenda also includes approval of minutes from the May 8th Board of Education meeting.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, I would like to recognize...
I think we need to vote first.
That's right.
It's okay.
Sorry.
At this time, I would like the board members in favor to please say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, now.
Thank you. So at this time, I would like to recognize the retirements of our following staff members. We have Kristi Zankowski, 23 years as a social worker in our district; Leola G., 15 years at Plymouth High School Journalism; Penny Graff, 15 years as a social worker at Plymouth High School; Linda Genzel, 32 years as an elementary teacher at Isbister Elementary School; Marjorie Palmer, 15 years language arts teacher at West Middle School; and Daniel Young, 24 years Pioneer Middle School as a physical education teacher. Congratulations to all of our teachers who have decided to retire at this time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Are any of them present tonight? Okay, thank you. At this time, we're on Letter B of our agenda, which is everybody's favorite time, celebrating success. Presenting tonight will be Member Sidhu, and she is recognizing the Discovery Middle School 8th Grade Band.
Our great music programs are some of the amazing opportunities that our students have at PCCS, and tonight it is with great honor to be celebrating success with Discovery Middle School 8th Grade Band. So this evening, we will honor Discovery Middle School 8th Grade Band for receiving an overall rating of 1, Superior by Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association in March. I would like to invite Discovery Middle School Director of Bands, Mark Whitlock, up to the podium. Mark, would you like to talk to us about some of the efforts with your students?
You bet I would. For most concert bands in the state of Michigan, the highlight of the year is performing at the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association Band Festival. Though the quantity of performing bands is high, the judges can be somewhat conservative about giving out superior ratings, so when a band earns a superior rating, you know it really means something. Professionally speaking, this 8th Grade Band is one of the best bands at any level that I've had the privilege to teach. Personally speaking, they're an absolute joy with great teamwork, personality, and best of all, they get me. It is wonderful to stand in front of students who understand you, laugh with you, buckle down and work hard when needed, and take pride in who they are. Besides the MSBOA Band Festival, our students have also performed at the MSBOA Soul and Ensemble Festival with Special Proclamation of Their Achievement by Representative Kristi Pagin, the Wayne State University Middle School Honor Band, the Detroit Symphony Orchestra Middle School Honor Band, the Plymouth Canton Community Schools Middle School Honor Band, the Down River Day of Percussion, and the JV Percussion Ensemble. These kids are busy. No team can earn high achievement without the support of others. I would like to take this time to thank all the parents and guardians for their unending support of our Discovery Band program. I would also like to thank Mr. Terry Sawchuck for his outstanding administrative support of the Discovery Band. Also thanks to you, the board, and central administration for supporting the arts in Plymouth Canton. When you're trying to cook up greatness, you need to have all the ingredients. And thanks to the great students and parents and administration and community, we have all that, and this is why our 8th Grade Band did so well. Not all of our 8th Grade Band could be here this evening, as the majority are involved in community and district activities this evening. So on behalf of all the students, all the band students, we thank you all so much for the Stars Awards for our 8th Grade Band. It is a special honor for us. Also, you are all invited to our final concert of the year on May 31st at 7:00 PM. Thank you all so much.
On behalf of the board, we'd like to present you with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mile Award for your efforts.
Thank you.
In helping our students achieve this great success, and now we're going to be honoring your students. So what I'm going to do is read off all the names, because there are quite a few of them, and then we'll invite the students that are present to come up and grab their awards. So, and also, please bear with me, in terms of mispronouncing your name, I'm used to it, with a name like Anupam Chugsidhu, it gets all the time. And I don't take it personally, so please bear with me. Christian Almond, Ty Bankey, Jenna Ballard, Yuvia Bakera, Shadi Baraka, Joshua Brauchler, Kai Bunjak, Janard Dohler, Ashley Dong, Cody Dureka, Benjamin Friends, Caitlin Ferrier, Devon Gentry, Karen Hayden, Connor Hagerman, Jared Howard, Adrian Jones, and Brianna Jones. They're my special ones, because I've known them since they were really little. Mahida Karnadi, Sarah King, Nathan Kinsey, Mary-Kate Kirkpatrick, Lane Glynglass, Nate Carf, Grace Laney, Kurban Lihal, Joshua Lang, Abigail Lockmondi, Bouvi Mayunk, Morgan O'Dowd, Connor O'Loughlin, Hia Patel, that's an easy one for me, Adam Peck, another easy one, Brandon Paris, Garrett Pinkerton, William Price, Gabriella Ray, Tia Shili, Jaden Shalikas, Mahakdeep Sidhu, another easy one for me, Cyrus Summerlin, Michaela Turkinsky, Arun Tur, Aiden Uno, Jordan Wade, Devon Willman, Anna Yu. So for all that are present, would you please come up and grab your awards? And would any of the students like to say a few words while you're here? Talk about your experience and what this has meant for you. Awesome, come on up, please.
Yeah, so, being in the Discovery Middle School Band has been pretty much the highlight of all of my education, even though I've only been in the education system for so long. But Mr. Whitlock is probably the most important teacher me or any of my friends in band have ever had, because Mr. Whitlock likes to say it in class all the time, how when one of the members of band gets into trouble, you don't call the math teacher and say, "One of your kids just did this." We're band kids, this is what we do. And now I'm in marching band, because he always talks about it, he always tells us every single opportunity outside of class to make us become even better like musicians and students. And it means so much to me that I always get to perform with other amazing musicians and conducted by the most amazing musician I've ever met. And I'm really grateful that I got to be in his band, and it makes me so sad that this is my last year with him.
What is your name?
Sarah King.
Sarah?
King.
King, thank you, Sarah. That's very nice.
Would any other students like to come up and say a few words?
Really does.
No? Okay. So at this point, I would like to have everyone give them a big round of applause, and then please come up and shake the board member's hands.
Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Oh, look at them, everything, good job. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations, great job. Oh, you'll just love marching. It's a gift that keeps giving. On and on, you know you can do that in college too, right? Good job. Drum corps in the summer, oh, it's lovely.
Thank you.
She's a money pit.
Yes.
So we'll wait a few minutes while they get a picture.
Could somebody peek and see how they're doing?
Okay.
report. So, in the last couple of weeks since our last board meeting, I had the pleasure of attending several events that were really nice and celebrated our students. The first one was the Turnaround Achievement Awards, which was last week and took place at Super Bowl. The owners of Super Bowl sponsor this every year for us, and it's just a wonderful event, and it celebrates our students who have turned their lives around in various ways. And just a wonderful event, I know Dr. Bender was there too, and it was, I think many of us were there. Just a really nice event, so I was glad I was able to go to that. I also attended the Arts Academy Seniors Capstone Project Showcase. The student that I had been mentoring invited me, and so not only did I get to see her project, which is the culmination of this year's work for her, but I saw many of the different projects that our Arts Academy seniors worked on, and just, they really blew me away. Really interesting projects, very different, and just shows their creativity. I also had the pleasure of attending Honors Night for a little bit tonight at Plymouth High School. There are three honors nights, one for each high school, so the other two honors nights are tomorrow night and Thursday night, and so the other board members will be going to those. Ms. McCoyne came with me this evening, so just really a pleasure to be able to attend those events. So now that we have Member Sidhu back after the picture, we'll go to the Student Performance and Achievement Committee Report. Member Sidhu.
We have not met since our last board meeting, but I encourage all of you to join us on June 6th at 4:30 PM, right in this room, to learn more about our Student Performance and Achievement Committee work, and we'd always love to have comments from the community, just hear what we have to offer, and just participate in a discussion with us if you like. Thanks.
And next up is the Policy Committee. Member Crouch is not here tonight, so Member McCoyne, could you please give that report?
Sure. We have not met either. Normally, tonight would have been our meeting, but we postponed it because of the Honors Night that was happening. So our meeting will be next Tuesday, the 29th, at 5:30, right here in this building. So come on out, it's always fun.
They sing at their meeting.
We do sing.
They also sing here.
And next up is Finance and Operations Committee. Member Kehoe is still on his way from the airport, I believe, so Member McCoyne, would you mind giving that report also?
So we met last Thursday at 4 o'clock, and we had a lovely meeting. Anssey was very excited to be there. And we are meeting again Wednesday, June 6th at 4:30. I see that it is a dueling meeting with SPA, but you could go back and forth between the meetings and try to catch all of it. So, 4:30, Wednesday, June 6th, is our next meeting. Also very exciting.
Thank you. Next up is the Educational Excellence Foundation Report, and that's me again. I still don't have all the numbers from our wine tasting, so I'm hoping to get those soon, but I did want everyone to put on their calendars. Saturday, August 25th, the Back to School Bash, featuring the Educational Excellence Foundation's Quest for Excellence. And last year, we had this event for the first time, and it was just a wonderful event, and we had way more people than we expected, and so I'm hoping that everyone can turn out for that. Should be a lot of fun, and it's family-friendly. All right, next up, we have Citizens Comments. I see I have several people who wish to speak tonight. I, each person who speaks gets three minutes, so Mr. Brandon will be timing that, and so please make sure that when he tells you your time is up, that you finish up then, please. And I will be calling you by name, so when I call your name, please come up and speak. First is Maya Sudrajat.
Thank you very much. My name is Maya Sudrajat. I live in Plymouth, and my children are 9th grade and 6th grade, both in Plymouth Canton School District. Today, I'm going to talk about the bias in the AP World History textbook. Why is this important for me? Let me tell you a little bit about my background. I grew up in Indonesia, under severe discrimination against ethnic minority Chinese, and under persecution, being minority Christian in the big Muslim country. In the year of 98, my family survived the backlash against Chinese ethnic, during which many were killed, business destroyed, and houses were burned. In the year 2000, I survived the church bombing in my church during one of the Christmas Is. In 2001, we moved to Michigan. We moved here for safety, freedom, equality, and justice. When, last year, my son took AP World History, and it was very upsetting for him to learn the content of this book, because it is very biased against Christianity. The statements in this book regards a lot of information that is against our biblical values. I have discussed this with the teachers, the counselors, the superintendent, Ms. Monica Merritt, and also the director of curriculum. And I also, today, is going to file the petition and file complaint for the AP World History textbook for the review. I also have the explanation. In addition to this book, I also in the process of reviewing 6th grade social study textbook because of the same bias. In the last few months, I also heard comments about conducts of several teachers in our school district that is anti-Christian, very negative against Christianity. My ask today, on behalf of our community and parents, is that our school continues to provide education with excellence and truth, no bias against Christianity, in the textbook, in the supplement materials, and also in the ways teachers conduct classes. Other parents are going to discuss similar topic with me today, but let me assure you that we are here as community, as parents, to work together with you and to support you. Please use our diverse background and diverse views so that we can provide education to our students without bias, with excellence and truth. I have petition that is signed by more than 80 people, 80 parents and community members here, that ask the school district to stop discrimination against Christianity. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Do I distribute the materials?
You could pass them. Next up, and please forgive me, I can't read this very well, is it Trisha?
Trisno.
Trisno? Okay, sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Trisno. My two children attended the Plymouth Canton School. The AP World History textbook provide biased view of many religion, in particular towards Christianity and Judaism, and I find it disturbing and offensive. The Rise of Christianity chapter is written with a view and opinion from non-Christian with clear discrimination against Christian and Judaism. Many Christian, including myself, are offended by the information presented in the textbook. To allow student to learn accurate and proper education, the information about religion should be factual, unbiased, and coming from the expert of their religion. Here are some of the example, I cannot write many of them because the information is provided there. The book state it is difficult to determine the motive and the teaching of historical Jesus. Well, while it is clearly Bible state the purpose and the motive of Jesus, that Jesus is the Son of God who comes to the earth to save humankind from the wrath of God, and he died on the cross to redeem human sin. The author of the book clearly uses his own judgment instead of stating the fact taught in the Bible or written in the Bible. To describe Jesus, the author should use Bible as the primary source, not personal opinion. In addition, using only several verses in the Bible, and out of context, the author inaccurately suggests that the prophets often spoke out on behalf of the uneducated lower class, and there was not objective reporting, but rather anguish vision of unconventional individual. Judaism and Christianity, however, regard prophet as the messenger of God. The book ultimately fails to mention that the prophet of Amos actually came true in the later chapter. There are many other example in the book, including Abraham was mentioned twice in the book. In the Judaism part, the book question the existence of Abraham, if he is the real person. In the later chapter, The Rise of Islam, Abraham was mentioned as a great builder of Kaba, and there's no doubt he was a real person. This chapter written obviously from a different point of view, and contradict with the Bible and Torah states what Bible and Torah state, and they are not based on the fact. If this is a history book, it should tell facts instead of opinions. My ask is that the board and the school provide education with excellence and truth in textbook, supplementary material, and the way teacher conducts the class. Education student should be based merely on facts and not one's opinion or views. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Martin Richter.
Here, madam and sirs of the school book, my name is Martin Richter. I have two daughters who also go to, in the Canton Plymouth School District. And I would like to continue with basically the line proving about the bias, about the bias of this history book, by pointing out or showing the different authors. So there are six different authors for this history book, and I just briefly listed, and then come to my point about this. So the main author is Richard W. Bulliard. He is, well, all of them are professors of history, so all have PhD or professor in history. So the special expertise of Mr. Bulliard is history of technology, history of the role of animals in human society, and in particular, history of Islamic society and institution, and here in particular, in, but the Iran society. The other authors are Pamela Crossley, expert in the field of modern China and Northern Asia, Daniel Hetrick, author of many books, including Power of People's Technology, Environment, and Western Imperialism. Fourth, we have Lyman Johnson, expert in Latin America history. Fifth, we have Stephen Hirsch, expert in Greek, Roman, and Near Eastern history. And finally, we got David Nordrup, expert in African history. Why I'm telling you this? It's coming back to the religious point, so out of the six authors, we got just one, Richard Bulliard, who is an expert in religions, and here in the Islamic view only. You can read, there's an official description, you can read it, it's named Amazon, that basically stating about himself. Richard is a burlapst Methodist and long departed from theology of any church. Now, my question is, do we want, do we really want to teach our students and children about Christianity, Judaism, Hinduism, and other religions merely from the viewpoint of... Christianity, Judaism, Hinduism, and other religions merely from the viewpoint of Islamic history only? Well, just to make an analogy of this, if you want to send your child, let's say, to teach piano lessons, would you him, would you send your child to an expertise drummer? Or if your child has fever, would you send him to a dentist? I don't believe so. So my point is here all that if we represent different faiths in a history book, then it should be fair and unbiased. And well, I can only repeat the main argument for excellent and truth in teaching, we need this more balanced overall point of view and representation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Cheryl Picard.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picard, and I just wanted to present because I had become friends with Maya and just hearing her history and the things she'd went through. She was concerned about this, so I thought, well, take a look at it. And I had actually had heard other concerns from parents about the history book. So I have four children who are already graduated, who'd been in the system since ninety-three till two thousand and sixteen, so. And we were involved with different things and I was a parent that would check things and look at things and read things. And so I thought, well, take a look at it. And I was really dismayed. I know this district is very concerned with diversity and is very good about including people and making sure things are good. I do, I do understand that, you know, everybody is not a Christian and that, that there are different views on that. But when I read this book and it was supposed to present Christianity in a book and some of the same examples that were given, I was just really disturbed, you know, when it, in a section talking about Abraham's sons, Isaac and his grandson Jacob became the leaders of the wandering group of herders. In the next generation, the squabbling sons of Jacob's several wives sold their brother Joseph as a slave to passing merchants heading for Egypt. According to the biblical account, through luck and ability, Joseph became a high official at Pharaoh's court. I mean, so luck, I mean, luck and ability, that's offensive. I mean, God has a power. It's not luck that, that Christianity has survived. And also, just the terminology, I found, I found the book very unprofessional, inconsistent, and I found that it was very subjective. And I think, you know, to refer to the squabbling sons, it just sounds so below, like, what the kids' capability of understanding and why not, you know, these, that's what, it wasn't that. These sons were, they were jealous. They were jealous of their brother and they sold him into slavery. I mean, it's, they're just squabbling, it sounds like a bunch of chickens. So I just, I just think that was just a little, but, I mean, that was just a little example, but they also talk about the Christian God is the warlike God. But when you, I looked at the Islamic section, not so. I, but I think when you look at history and the facts and what's even going on in today's world, that could be argued, who's the warlike? And also, I also wanted to just say, you know, to say that Jesus didn't know what his, what his intentions were, it's just, I mean, all you have to do is open a Bible and read the red writing about what he says. I just, if this person who wrote this was a former Methodist and did not even see this, he could at least say, the Bible says this, you know, instead of saying it was just this or that, you know, he could say Christians believe this. He doesn't have to believe it. He can just say what Christians believe because it says it in the Bible. Nobody says they have to believe it, it just has to express it as what the Christians believe, just like Islam, instead of stating as a fact.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to express my concern and, you know, I've been here a long time and I think a lot of time should be spent on the goals is facts instead of equity. I think we need to really push facts.
Next up is Sebastian. And I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your name. Is it? Is Sebastian here?
My bed, actually, I have a free bedhand already. I type most of the time. It's an Oster tag, but. So, I mean, I'm a student, I'm not an adult and everything, but so I just wanted to offer like a student perspective on this. I did not take AP World History. I took IB World History, which was relatively similar, relatively. And it is, like, I did read in the textbook and everything. I worked for the newspaper, so I wrote like an article about the textbook specifically. And from what I saw, not just the textbook, but also the company, Hutton Mifflin, they actually, they've already gotten problems from different legal groups because of, not necessarily just bias, but just like the way that they presented things in a, like, you could, you could tell it wasn't neutral. And that would probably be one of the worst things I've seen. And when they talk about specifically, like, it is difficult to determine the historical teachings and ideas of, you know, Jesus, that, I mean, we can, we can believe that and everything, but, and people can say, well, the Bible is just, you know, a belief book and everything. But historically, it is the best account that we have of Jesus specifically. Accounts written a few years after he died. So actually, well, for like twenty years, a few years. And the idea that, and that would be opinion, specifically that, okay, Jesus might have said this, or maybe his disciples, okay, wait, maybe he didn't actually mean this, but we're going to tweak it in this way, or basically put in that all is stable. Historically, we know what Jesus said. We don't have to believe it, but we know what he said. And as a student, I just want to say that. I said one minute twenty-six, five, okay, that's good.
Thank you. Thank you, Sebastian. Next up is Tammy Carlon.
Hello, my name is Tammy Carlon. I'm a CPA from Novi, Northfield School District. I'm a national, state, and local education advocate of eighteen years. I've been asked by parents and students in the district to help due to my extensive knowledge about what's going on in our nation's schools. Why am I spending time here tonight when there's a million other things to be doing that would be more fun? Because I'm passionate about all children. I'm passionate about the future of our state and I'm passionate about our nation. I am passionate, therefore, about excellence and truth in education. I could talk about many issues facing our schools today, but today, my focus here is to talk about the anti-Christian bias many people, including myself, have witnessed within the district. My two children, after finishing K-12 in Northfield Schools, are both at the University of Michigan, one studying neuroscience in the Honors College and the other finishing up a master's degree in biomedical engineering. I also attended public schools and graduated from the University of Michigan. I have not just studied our nation's schools every day for the last eighteen years, I have been a student of them for seventeen years and a very involved parent in them for another eighteen years. What we are seeing in this district, I have seen happening all over the nation, and it is going to have extremely negative ramifications. Teaching Islamic doctrine while ignoring Christian doctrine is not only not fair, it is wrong. While I know there is global special interest money at play here, Michigan is a local control state and it is your job to make sure everything presented to the students is accurate and unbiased. There is nobody else to look at, you have full power. Presenting Islam in a positive biased way while giving the students inaccurate information about and a negatively biased view of Christianity is not only illegal at the national, state, and local level, but it does not provide our students with truth and excellence in education. Please refer to national, state, and local law, as well as Supreme Court findings, as well as current related lawsuits. I can provide those as needed. Today, I have with me a Michigan constitution here with the relevant sections highlighted for anybody interested. The schools are, the schools are to present unbiased facts, leaving out prejudice against certain groups. This is true even if students do not come forward pointing errors out. It is not their job, they are children. Parents and students count on you to get it right, they trust in you. Without trust, our public schools will fall apart. This is part of the reason homeschooling is increasing at such a rapid rate. Let's not let this happen. Let's not take away from our much-needed public school system. Presenting inaccurate information about any subject, religion or otherwise, is not what parents trust you to do while you have their children in your care. Our ask today is very simple, and that is that Plymouth Canton Community Schools follow national, state, and local law and their own mission of excellence in education and only present truth and facts when teaching religion, especially stop all inaccurate and biased teachings in the district against Christianity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're on letter E, presentations. And first one is from Teaching and Learning, Dr. Bender.
Thank you, Mrs. Berninski, and welcome, or good evening, everyone. At Tonda, the students are trying their best to finish the year strong and are being supported by a caring staff that is engaged in their own learning to further strengthen their skills and provide the students with what they need to be successful. And here to highlight the good work taking place at Tonda is Principal Dr. Deirdre Brady.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for giving me some time this evening to share the work that we've been doing at Tonda Elementary in regards to our school improvement. I have, some of my staff members are also here, I have three of my teachers, thank you, who are also here. And so obviously, I'm presenting this evening, but the work at Tonda with school improvement really comes from the entire staff and the work that, that they're doing on a daily basis because the plan is, yes, I'm leading the building, obviously, as the principal, but the work is coming through my, through my staff. We're very proud of the work that we've done over the course of our time together, I've been there for two years, and we're excited about where we're headed. So at Tonda, we looked at data to try to determine what the goals were going to be, and we have four goals specifically in the areas of reading, writing, math, and science. Looking at those more deeply for the objectives, the data was very clear that in some areas, we needed to work and support all students in their learning, and in some areas, we needed to focus on something a little bit different. So down on the bulleted points, you'll see that in the areas of reading, writing, and science, we needed to focus on all students to continue to move those forwards, forward, and I'll show you some data in a couple minutes that shows why we needed to do that. In the area of math, our overall scoring was, we were proud of where we were overall, but we definitely needed to do some work with students with IEPs, and so we had an objective that was specifically for that. And then the staff didn't, although social studies, and you'll, you'll see data, we've increased quite a bit in our social studies, we didn't want that to not be also a priority. So what we chose to do was put it into the reading, under the reading goal, because we know that nonfiction reading, especially in content areas, is super important and could be a reason why we're having some struggles inside of our social studies. The first piece of data we're going to look at this evening is in regard to M-Step data, and I know I've got a lot going on in the chart. I have colors and I've got years and I have a lot going on, but I was trying to show a look at longitudinal data for M-Step. Sometimes it can be very difficult to look at a snapshot, especially with state testing because it continues to change. M-Step has, and we've had that for three years, and prior to it was MEAP, and you'll notice at the very bottom row, the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school year, that was done paper pencil. And you'll notice when the students at Tonda transitioned into the electronic version, the fifteen, sixteen school year scores dipped, and we kind of think that that has to do with the change in format for us, so we look at the data from that realm. We also look at the data from a cohort standpoint, so I have things color-coded so that you can kind of see across time. So for example, the third grade in fourteen, excuse me, fifteen, the third graders in ELA were at sixty-eight, that was paper pencil. When they did electronically, as fourth graders, they went to fifty-eight percent passing, and then last year, those students were at seventy-two percent. So when you look, when you look at us across time, so vertically, you can look at just that grade level across time, and then of course, looking at it as a cohort, we want to look at it both ways to make sure we had a breadth of what was happening, not just a snapshot. We also, of course, looked at our science and social studies, and you'll notice that this past school year, both science and social studies went up nine percent. And in talking with the teachers, in fifth grade, we have one teacher who teaches the social studies for the grade level, and in fourth grade, all of the teachers teach their own science. But I had conversations, once we saw what those data, what that data said, in regards to what did we do differently? We did definitely attack some things differently last year, which is why we believe the success, that nine percent is quite a bit in one school year to be able to move, so we're very proud of that as well. Another piece of data that we look at in our building is the NWA data that we have, that the district does, and we do three times a year. So what I have for you is information regarding the projected growth. So on NWA, the projective growth score from fall to spring is based on where students at the end of the year, what about fifty percent of the kids will hit. So NWA says, some of them won't hit that, that number, but about fifty percent will hit that or go further than that. So it'd be really hard to hit exactly a one hundred percent, but it's a good number to look at to see, are we, in comparison to other students across the country, how are our students doing in hitting those goals? And you'll notice that this past school year, seventy-one percent of our students were able to do the math component and the sixty-four in the reading. I'd like to highlight the reading aspect for you because that is significantly different than what it had been previously. Part of the work that we did last year, which I'm going to get into next, revolved around doing instructional practice work in our building and discussing best practices for teaching students reading. Get into that component of it. So for us, under our reading goal, our overall focus was really to look at reading workshop and making sure that that's happening with fidelity. As you well know, the district moved to workshop this year as a, as a framework and a structure. We started that work at Tonda last year, having conversation about best instructional practices. So we were kind of fortunate that we were heading that direction and the whole district was, so we kind of got a jump start on that. So as we were thinking about, we wanted to work on this past school year in particular, some of the action steps are up there. One of them was to make sure that we were looking at what best practice instruction was, as I have already said. So things such as what workshop is, the components of workshop, the district provided information about that, but we also continued that work at Tonda on our own. We also provided opportunities for teachers to be able to dig into the NWA data. So although that happened several times during the year, time is always valuable, right? There's never enough time. So each of the staff meetings are school improvement focused, we don't have dissemination of information kinds of meetings, we try to have them always be around school improvement. And one of those timeframes, one of my fifth grade teachers, who is here tonight as well, she is my NWA person with me, who goes and we learn about different things to implement. And when we come back into the building, after the NWA testing is done, we give opportunities for staff to be able to dig into that data because we might find students that didn't move as much as we, we wanted them to do or didn't anticipate that they were going to be there, and we want to make sure we're providing the additional support, so we give teachers time to do that. Another opportunity we looked at was allowing, some of our teachers, our K-1 teachers, used millage money that was provided to the building, thank you very much, to take, take teachers to a different district where workshop has been in place for quite a while, so that they could wrap their minds around how that looks. At some time, sometimes it's difficult to implement something you haven't seen, that you've discussed but haven't seen. So we took all of our seven kindergarten and first grade teachers for an opportunity to see reading workshop, writing workshop, as well as word study. And then they spoke with the teacher to debrief with the teachers after that timeframe, and then as a team with me, we worked on what are our next steps for you in your grade level so that they could come back and implement. Teachers have, those teachers have reported this year feeling very secure in the work that they're doing, I think in part because of what they were able to see. When you see it yourself, it makes it a little bit easier. We also used millage money to make sure we obtained resources. It's one thing, we have a book room, we've had a book room, but there were many copies of a few titles. We need a few copies of tons and tons and tons of titles in order to make sure students have enough. So we used a good portion of the millage money to be able to buy resources for the book room, but also for teachers, for their classrooms as well. And then you're going to see the last one in every single component. What is in progress is what I'm calling a common materials shared folder, something that we've talked about in the building, is just lack of consistency, right? In fourth grade, it kind of looks like this, but we're kind of looking like this in first grade. And when we have very different, like graphic organizers, for example, or understanding of what depth of knowledge questioning can be, when those things look different from grade level to grade level, it can be confusing for students. And so making sure that we have some consistency components, that's getting started this year, it'll get rolled out, you'll see, in next steps, next year. As far as the writing implementation goes, what we wanted to look at was examining the state writing standards and exploring writing workshop. That wasn't where the, the year started. The year started in a different place, and we had anticipated, the writing team had anticipated being able to do some different components. But once we started to jump in, we realized we had some, had to back up, back up the truck a little bit. Sometimes you just have to stop what you're doing, that's not working, and discuss and think about where we need to be. So we found that we really needed to unpack the writing standards, and what I mean by that is, people knew perhaps their own individual grade level, and the standard is extremely broad. But that doesn't mean that they understood where that sat in the scope and sequence of a pre-K-12 educational component. And you need to know where they came from in order to help them get where they need to go. So we needed to sit and unpack the standards a little bit, and we're currently actually doing that work right now. We also have started to have conversations regarding process and prompt writing, they're two very different kinds of writing. And the process writing is sitting in a genre for a long time and understanding what you need to do to be able to write in that genre. to be able to write in that genre and create enough piece that comes out of the process of understanding. Prompt writing could come from a content area, right, you get a prompt, you write to it, and those are very, very different things. So we started that work, but we need to continue with that. The scope of our work that we've been working on, really the second part of the year recently, has been what are called scaffolding documents. So like I said previously, the standards are very broad, and you can think that you understand that, but your neighbor next to you might have a very different understanding of what that standard means. So a scaffolding document allows for us, in the same grade level, to make sure we have common understanding, but also that there's consistency vertically as well. So the teachers are working on, what does this mean that they should know coming in? So like as a fourth grade teacher, what probably do kids already know coming to me? Which means it needs to match what's happening in third grade. And then we're going to talk about, what are we going to do to make sure we're hitting that standard, and what do kids do as an output? So the teachers are working on that from a narrative standpoint, because that is the first unit that they will start in the fall as a narrative unit. So, that way, they're coming into the fall ready to go, they kind of have a consistency with each other, we have a consistency in the building to be able to know that we're all doing the same thing. And then again, you'll see that common materials piece is something else. From a math standpoint, as I said before, our focus was really on ensuring that we were meeting the needs of students who perhaps had IEPs or needed additional supports. And so some of the work that has been happening is analyzing data to identify students who need that additional support, again, the same thing after NWA is done, giving them opportunities to look at that math data. The three through fifth grade, we have had conversations with what kind, performance tasks, that's very different than just understanding the concept, but making sure that they have opportunities to do something deeper with the math and just understand the rote knowledge. I have teachers in most of the grade levels who are trying out some pre-assessments with math. When you teach everybody the same thing, that kind of doesn't necessarily meet all those needs that we're trying to hit. So, pre-assessing students is a good way to understand readiness from students who might need additional supports to get them up to the level ready for that grade, or it could be for students who've already mastered that content and need something different. So, in grades first through fifth grade, I have teachers playing with different things with that, doing some project-based learning, some different ideas. And then, again, you'll see the common materials folder, that's what we're doing in math. From a science standpoint, we were really thinking about the new state standards, and in preparation for that, we did some organization of current resources, you kind of have to know what you have already in the building to be able to reallocate or know what we need and where we need to go from that. We also did some looking at the nonfiction texts that we have, again, in our bookroom. Some of that might, could migrate to a different grade with the science standards shifting, some of them need to move. Some of them might not be appropriate for that grade level reading ability, so just knowing what we need and where we need to go, and again, the common materials folder, common theme. In addition to the work that we've been doing with those four goal areas, there are some things to highlight from there, and of course, there are so many, I picked a few. The first is an inaugural multicultural night that we had. Tonda does have a diverse population, and in conversation with several of the parents in the building, we discussed how we have that represented, but we don't necessarily celebrate that in that kind of way. So we had our first multicultural night. Families were able to tell us what country they would like to highlight and what cultures, or ideas, and background, and food, and all of those pieces that they wanted to share with us, so they got kind of a very open, open table of what they wanted to do with it. So you'll see in the three different pictures, the kiddos then were able to present to the people who came, and we had students who were not presenting, just come for the evening, we had families come, we had staff there, of course, who came to see as well. The parents were so excited to be able just to share their background, the information from their families, so it was a lovely evening. Something else that we've also been working on is kind of a culture thing at Tonda. Last year, in, when I first got there, we kind of looked at the mission statement, and sometimes mission statements can be rather wordy, and we are a place where we have five-year-olds to ten-year-olds who live with us every day, and if the kids can't read the mission statement, it's probably not the right mission statement for us. So, you'll see on the right-hand side, that is the Tonda mission statement, we talk about howling, that's having respect, owning our choices, working hard and learning together every day, that's our mission statement, that came out last year, and then this year, we had conversations about how are kids living that howl, and do they understand what that means and what they're doing. So, one of the things on the left-hand side you'll see is the caught howling. On Fridays, staff members can turn in a student, two students, some people have turned in their whole classes because they felt like something good was happening for the whole class. It goes out in the front wall in our foyer area, the kids stop and read them on a daily basis, they stop and look. They're up for two weeks, I take them down, new kids go up, so that we can kind of rotate that through. We also, we have pack teams that are, I have nineteen kids that are mine in my pack, they come from all grade levels. My teachers who are here tonight, they have their own little kiddos from across the building. Two of the teachers in our building organized those, and they have been focused on the howl, the howl in our mission statement. And then we also have howl assemblies, that is brand new, we've only done a couple of them. The first one was, all of us, the whole school gets together, we sit in a U shape so that we can see each other, so it's more like family, right? We can see each other instead of each other's backs. The first one was in regards to anti-bullying initiatives, and for kids to understand, I read a book to the whole school, and we have a tag, the end of the book says it only takes one, the title of the book is "One", so you have a tagline, I say that to kids, sometimes only takes one, it takes one. Then my behavior specialist and I went and followed up on that book in classrooms to follow up in a more small setting. The howl assembly that's coming up, one of our teachers is working with some of our fifth grade students to do some skits about upstanding, being an upstander, ideas. So, trying to follow that through is our character education component. The final thing to highlight is, this is the first year that we've had robotics teams at Tonda, and we had nine. It was awesome, wonderful, those are K through third grade students, and next year, we'll be doing the little ones as well, but we're also adding the first Lego League for the fourth and fifth graders. And so I had a parent who moved in who was super excited, and we had nine teams the first year, so we're very fortunate of all the parent support that we have at Tonda to be able to do all of those components. So our next steps, some of them I've kind of shared before, is we need to continue our professional learning with workshop for reading, continuing that, but heading in that direction with writing as well. With that comes the concept of word study, making sure that our word study components are linking our reading and writing together. We want to continue to monitor students who have, need additional supports, and make sure that we have the strategies in place to support them to help close those gaps. We want to make sure that the common materials that I've talked about, that's just me kind of like trying to compile, and teachers and I talking about things and stuff kind of sitting there, but next year, it needs to really be rolled out so everybody knows where is everything at, what's in there, how do we use all the pieces to make sure that we have, have that fully implemented. And then, like I shared earlier, the scaffolding documents for writing, we will have the narrative ones done this year, but that means we don't have nonfiction done, we don't have the opinion pieces, but we need to do all that work through the next year so the teachers have that consistent understanding of what's happening. I'm very proud to be the principal at Tonda, I have an amazing staff who work very hard, they have been very open-minded to trying things, to taking risks, which sometimes can be scary, just to try, because there's been some changes, and they've been very brave. Their conversations around student learning are extremely deep, and they make me better, hopefully, I help them to become, to become better as well. I appreciate the time coming this evening to share just a brief amount of what we're doing at Tonda. Is there any questions or anything I can answer for you this evening?
I have a question. And then you can go.
Okay.
When you're looking at the longitudinal M-Step data slide, I was just wondering, the dip that you saw after we changed from paper and pencil to taking the test electronically, do you know if other districts had that same situation, that same thing occur?
So I can speak to the district from which I came, and we did not do paper pencil M-Step. We jumped right in to, to the electronic version. I will tell you that as soon as, it was M-Step, so that kind of had a different rigor than MEEP did to begin with, and so we did see a dip that first year, but not, not to the same degree that I noticed here.
Okay.
I have a follow-up, because you did ask my question, but how do you counter that? Are you giving the kids additional time to get used to the computer testing? How do you counter what happened, or would it be more, I'm just so curious about this, about the paper pencil?
Yeah, I think part one, the one-to-one, that's huge, to be able to have students have a comfort level with the technology.
Were they not there when they made the change?
I can't answer that question for you, I was not in the district at this time, so I'm not, I'm not. No, my staff says no. So, so I feel like that, that's probably part of it, like, you know, for example, our fifth grade students, that, that's, that's just part of who they are, right, it goes everywhere with them, the teachers use it very seamlessly with students. So, it kind of is just a tool that they now use as opposed to this thing that we take a test on sometimes, especially for the upper elementary students. That's one component. The second is, you, in my former district, we made the, like, we ripped off the Band-Aid all at one time, right? Like, we switched to the M-Step and we did, we did electronically all in one fell swoop, and this kind of went, you know, kind of a two-step process, so maybe that has something to do with it, I mean, I have no data on that clearly, it's just my thoughts.
Okay, anybody on the side right now? Okay, member Kehoe.
So I just, a comment, and we've seen all of these elementary presentations, and we've seen consistently that there's that drop-off when we went from paper to electronic, and it comes up every time, but it's, it's, it's useful. The other thing I wanted to commend you on is I really liked the longitudinal presentation of this. It's useful for us as board members to see how that cohort has grown over time. And, Dr. Bender, this might be something that would be a great practice for us going forward. The question I had was on the scaffolding and the work that you do with that, is that things that get incorporated into Rubicon Atlas? Or is that work that's specifically to your school?
So at this time, it's something that is specifically being done with my staff and I. My background is in curriculum work, and so it's just something that I know could be helpful for the understanding of my staff. It wasn't something I had planned to do, but like I said, with the writing component, I realized that maybe a little, my staff, my staff needed a little bit more work with that in something we did.
So that's, I guess then, my suggestion is, as you guys go through your professional learning communities and things like that, you look for ways to share the work that occurs in Tonda with other districts or other schools in the district so that we can try to get both consistency as well as the knowledge work that you have with your background in curriculum.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Member Mullin.
Just one comment, I love that your mission statement is comprehensible to the kids. Wow, what a great idea, and I think you really captured just a great ideas for them, and I really commend you for that. That just was a wonderful part of what you do, thank you.
Thank you, that was my staff, that was work that our staff did together, I mean, we talked about it, and kind of my parameter was, it needs to be kid-friendly because kids live here, and then they did the work of creating the mission statement.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Member McCormick.
It's really a comment, I thought it was just great that you had your teachers go and observe someone doing the workshop model.
Thank you.
Because it is really hard to teach something that you've not seen.
It is.
That's just excellent, and I also really like the idea that you are, like, you have a common folder, and people are, so it's going to be, what does a third grader need to know to go into fourth grade? Like, what a great idea.
And it does provide an opportunity, for example, a third grade teacher who perhaps has a student, I think the scaffolding documents as well, a third grade teacher who has a student who perhaps needs additional supports could look and see what's second grade working on with this without having to do anything, they really can just go into the shared folder and see that work from the scaffolding document.
What a great idea for your staff.
Thank you.
I appreciate the same things around the pre-assessment tests and the scaffolding, they all help support differentiation, which is, for me at least, a big, a big thing, and I'm glad to see you guys are doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, next we have a presentation from Finance and Operations. It is the, the initial budget review, so I'm sure we're all excited about that.
This is the audit of financial statements, it can't get any better than this.
This is all the cool stuff we're doing. So the audit of financial statements is all the cool stuff we've done.
This is what Patrick's been leading up to, big hurrah. My last initial budget, that's what I said this morning when I left. Ready? Okay. Do I get the thing, or you'll do it? Okay. Oh, okay. All right, the Finance and Operations Committee met on Thursday, and we presented the general fund initial budget, and we'll go over it tonight. I want to thank Vicky Amore, who makes this possible every year with all her hard work and dedication. And there is Vicky. And so tonight, we'll just go over some of the highlights and some of what we did. So the overview, oh, this is mine, right, okay. What we're going to do is, we're going to cover the process, we're going to go over some of the assumptions, just to highlight, budget, budget highlights, summary, revenue and expenditure detail, and some key dates that'll be coming forward. The process, you got the assumptions and calendar, and they were developed and presented in January, which is pretty much what we followed. Budgets requests were submitted, we reviewed them. The biggest thing I want to talk about tonight is the transformation session. We held our transformation session in April, and this year was a little different. The first year, we were in a cut mode, and it was their first exposure to the transformation. The next year, last year, we were sort of in the spending mode, and we got some more participation and requests. But this year, we really feel like everyone sort of got it, and they were all concerned for each other and what was best for the district. There was a lot of give and take, a lot of things were prioritized, and we prioritized for the general fund, the bond fund, and categorical, and I think a lot of good work came out of that. I think we all gained a lot of knowledge of what even was, goes on in the district and in every school. So I think that's reflected in the budget and what's needed for next year. The assumptions, I'm just going to hit on a few of them. The enrollment projections, this budget is based on fall of 2017 count. We adjusted for movement, school of choice, employee, shared time, and all of that. We looked at the Stanford projections, and pretty much stuck with maintaining it flat like we have the last two years. The other highlight of this slide is enhancement millage is included in the general fund and operations, and it's at ninety-one percent collections, which is the Wayne County collection rate. Highlight of this slide is just pretty much, we assume $230, that's the Senate's budget proposal for a state aid foundation. It's on the conservative side, it could potentially go up to $240, which is the governor's in the House, but with revenue, I stuck to $230. That was hard getting me there, but I was there, I'm there. And that's pretty much the important part, state aids calculated the 90/10, they didn't play with that this year, and there's our new indirect cost rates and Medicaid rates. The only thing on this slide is grants have not been finalized, and they will be brought to you, but they right now are just at, they're considered to be remaining flat because we don't have all the information in. The assumptions for the expenditures, this year again, in 2019, we focused on the district's dynamic plan and what we are going to do to go forward. Our staffing is at the board-adopted class-size guidelines. We staffed on, if anyone, I know the, we give you what we did revenue on, we staffed on 17-345, that's with the roll forward, the loss of students, gain of students, and how we get influxes sometimes in middle school, losses in high school, all of that was taken into consideration. So that was the basis for staffing. Basically, too, the budget was prepared on a zero-gold-based method that we've used for the last two years. This slide just deals with the compensation, you have approved the TA for the PCEA, and that is in this budget. I believe the PCA is on the agenda tonight or is coming, okay, oh, in June, okay, so that isn't, so everything else is still being negotiated. So the only one that's included in the budget is the PCEA. Okay, and then the first assumption on this page for expenditures is the increased limits for the hard cap. You can see where they were at 6,003 for a single, 13-2 for two-person, and 17-3 for full family. Now, in January 2018, they're at 6,500 for a single, 13-7 for two people, and 17-8 for a family, which is an approximate 3.4% increase. And also, the NIPsters increase below, it's a .62 rate change, which is approximately 2.5%, and it's about a half a million dollar impact on the budget. These are the budget highlights for revenue. Again, we use the stable enrollment projections, we use the fall 2017, which is a 17-51777. State aid foundation increase, we assumed was 230 per the Senate. The $25 per high school student is continued, that's our, the information we have to date. Change in settlement adjustment for Act 18 Center Program revenue, that's done on an annual basis. Grants were held at the 2018 level. Reduction in one-time NIPsters funding for early retirement buy-down. You'll see it's an in-and-out, but it was a $3.7 million line item. I don't know if any of you got a chance to review your reconciliations that we sent on Friday to sort of help you go from one budget to the other. But we did it pretty much like we do the amendment, so you could see things that didn't have financial. impact, but had impact on expenditures and impact on revenue. Reduction for one-time Act 18 distribution of excess funds. We talked about this every budget and every amendment, where they don't give us our money right up, and they won't make a commitment. For the last couple of years, it's been $400,000, $500,000. But being conservative, it's not included in this budget. Expenditure highlights, again, MIPsters rate increase, .62 is the rate change, or 2.5% increase, which is about a half a million dollars. Hard cap increase of approximately 3.3, which is again, about $530,000 increase. Dental insurance cost increase of 4.4%. Vision remained flat. We're increasing, adding a director of school safety and security. We're adding a human resource compliance manager. We're adding a maintenance semi-skilled ground staff. I want to note that all of the italics is what came out of transformation. So those were the things that through the transformation process were added. So on the next two slides, I tried to sort of group them by category, but wanted you to know what was the transformation results. The custodial pilot is an increase in service level, which we talked about with the GRBS contract, you know, cleanliness, and that came out of our surveys and also out of our community forum type thing that we did for the budget. So it's gonna be increased level at the high school, some middle, and a pilot at the elementary. Transportation contractual increase, a 2.5% increase, about $172,000. PCEA tentative agreement, about 2.7 million. Reserve for new accounting system is in there, which we desperately need, and we're hoping to get on and get in next year, about $430,000. Facility utilization study, which we've been talking about for 10-year going-forward capital plan for the district, and PCCS video services, about $19,000. And that came out of the transformation. This next page is also expenditure highlights, and you can see the italics here, most of which is school-based, and came out of transformation, that everyone felt that is needed to move forward. We have three EL teachers. Remember, last year, we brought on 10. Feel like we're making good progress. The overall need when we looked at it was 37, so we piloted it last year, and we're adding to it. Psychologists, one. FTE, 1.5. Social workers, 1.5 at Starkweather. Two behavioral specialists, one is at Discovery, and one is a BCBA curriculum, yeah, clinical behavior specialist. A PCEP 504 coordinator, a .6 FTE. A PCAP security guard, one FTE. IB coordinator, .2. I believe this is additional release time for the coordinator. Okay. Resource room, yeah, jump in any time. Resource room teacher, .2 FTE. Goals program part-time secretary. This is to give coverage. They don't have enough staffing to have coverage at lunchtimes and all with the children in the goals program. Summer Chromebook distribution, this is just extra hours to help facilitate an earlier distribution of Chromebooks. EL language, and that's something that has been being asked for. Summer EL language line services, this is phone translation services. IB testing hours, this is just additional hours at the high school for testing, et cetera. PCAP academic support, this is for weekends and evenings. PCAP journeys program, summer intake. Copier paper allowance by school, we'll talk about that a little bit. What this is, is we bought the new copiers, and we're encouraging everyone to use the new copiers, and we put the budgets at the schools this year. They had been intact, and it was just sort of, the bills got there and they paid them. Mark did an anal, oh, there's Mark, did an analysis of all of the usage, and came up with an average per student, and they were each given an allowance per student for impressions. And it's about 2.3, well, for elementary, it's 2,000, 2.0, yeah, 2004 or plus that. Okay, there you go. And so what we decided to do with that, too, is we kept hearing in transformation about the block grant that they get per pupil for spending discretionary at the schools. And one of the biggest things they use it on is paper. So as long as we were doing the copiers, we looked at the paper. So we gave them an allowance for every impression that we gave them, an allowance for the copier, we gave them an allowance for paper. And that worked to be out to be about $10 for elementary, eight for middle, and 12 for high school. And that's to cover the usage that they've been using all along. But now, their block grants will truly be discretionary, because they can spend it on things besides copier and papers. Capital allocation by school, which was $10,000 per school, to continue to let them invest in their buildings. This one, and we're hoping to have a conversation to fund this by bonds. This made the list, playgrounds for the elementary schools and furniture. On June 12th, we're having an FNO meeting on June 6th to discuss this. After we looked at prioritizing all of the general fund, there were a lot of capital things that were requested and came through transformation. We asked them to prioritize those, and so we're going to come back to you with those in conversation. And these two were particularly high, the playgrounds and the furniture, but it comes to about $340,000. And so instead of taking it out of the general fund, we would like to propose an alternative funding and have that conversation on June 12th. Math 180 teachers, a .4. Last year, they put in a .2. They have .6 for reading. Last year, they piloted a .2 at each middle school for math. Feel it was effective. They would like to increase it by .4 to bring that up to a .6, and we're proposing that that'll be funded by 31A, but that did come through transformation, so that you're aware. These things are funded by fiscal year 2017, 18, and again, the italic ones came through transformation, but we felt like they were one-time spends, and if we could get them in and ordered in 1718 and preserve next year's budget, that we would like to do that. So we've ordered some textbooks for next year, which we've seen. Musical instruments, which was, is on the agenda tonight. PCAP security vehicle, snowplow loader, which you saw last board meeting, and it'll second read tonight. Some art equipment, minor, fiscal education equipment, minor. Chromebook bags, which you saw last week and this last board meeting, and this will be the second read. And improvements to PCAP distant learning lab. And most of that's gonna be done internally. It's a layered lab, and the utilization of the room will be more, they'll be able to, I guess, more versatile. If they take that out, and Mike and his group are going to do most of it, and we'll just have to get some painting and minor outside contracting, so. So those are sort of the highlights. That's what came out of transformation, and those are the big things that came in and out. You've got your reconciliation, which you can see a lot more details of the little ins and outs and things that happened, but those are sort of the changes that'll impact next year. This is the initial budget summary. So our total baseline revenue is 168,096,295, with expenditures of 169,324,897. This requires a planned use of fund balance of $1,228,602. I just want to point out the outstanding issues. We're still in negotiations with a lot of the unions. The only one so far that's built in here is the teachers. We had, there's the revenue conference on the 16th, but nothing has really been finalized, that, you know, more or less or whatever, so there's still assumptions. There's also this UAL calculation, and this is the whole MIPsters retirement thing, that they're proposing a different calculation, but that hasn't been finalized, so we don't know what kind of impact that's gonna have on us. Also, the state aid adjustment, like we talked about earlier, it could go from 230 to 240. And then you always have the count in the fall, that for the last two years has actually come in higher than we budgeted, and again, with revenue, I sort of take a conservative approach. If it comes, it's great, but in case it doesn't, we're covered. So that's the summary. The next several pages are basically the detail, and we can go line by line if you would like. It's the revenue detail, and it's the expenditure detail, most of which I covered in the highlights. And also, I sent you the reconciliation, so I don't know if we want to just open it up to questions, if you have questions about it, or if you would like me to walk you through line by line.
I guess from my perspective, we went through it line by line in the FNO meeting.
Okay.
If my fellow board members have questions or want to do that, then we certainly can do that, but we did go through it line by line in FNO.
So I'm open to anything anyone would like to discuss. Process, assumptions, changes.
Maybe we should see what questions there are, and then that could sort of lead us. So, any questions over here right now?
I went to the FNO meeting. So I had all my questions answered.
Everyone should've come.
I know. Okay.
Even though I did go to the FNO meeting, I do have two questions.
Of course.
One was, we discussed, exactly. We discussed the security vehicle, and it was both, it was in the, this year's purchases as well as proposed for next year. Were you able to find the funds to be able to do it this year? Is that why it shows up?
Well, we're working on it, but we don't know if it's gonna get in by June 30th, and it might end up in that budget, but we're working on it.
Okay, so if you don't get it in by June 30th, would we do?
We would have to do an assignment.
So we do an assignment for?
Which the resolution is in this board meeting. Later.
Okay, good. And so that is included in that assignment already?
No, no, I don't, you don't actually get a number in the assignment. That is just the resolution that gives the authorization to assign.
Perfect.
Correct.
And then I have one other question around the reconciliation. We saw a reduction in the bus washers and the bus cameras.
Yes.
What were those, what was that about?
Well, last year, if you remember, we bought them with last year's money. They didn't come in by June 30th, so we had to assign them. So when you assign them, they end up in this year's budget.
So that was just an assignment.
But it's just a reduction, because now they're not. So it just shows you the change. Basically, that reconciliation took you from the amendment till now, so you can see all the changes in and out.
I got it. And then the last question I had was around the work that we're doing for school of choice. I can't remember what the numbers are. I know we authorized 250. What is the numbers that we've had for applications? Did we have to go to lottery, or did we have enough, or did we not have enough to hit the 250?
I'm gonna turn it over to the experts.
If I hang out of memory, I think we had 408 applicants, if I'm correct.
Let's see how you do.
She remembers these. Yeah.
She's good with her numbers.
Fantastic.
She got the first one right. 408 applicants.
I'm surprised she doesn't carry the chart around with her.
That's right.
In the, in the initial placement, we offered 250 seats. We had 177 of those that said yes. We had 22 that said no, and we did not receive a response from 48. Then we opened it up to a second-round placement, where we offered 74 more seats. We've so far had 27 yeses and five no's, and then we're still waiting on 42 of those.
Okay. So that's, that's about what we did last year, wasn't it?
Yes.
In terms of, I think we were 223 last year that accepted overall, so it'd be similar numbers.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Is there, is there a deadline for hearing deck?
There is. The first group, we have, we gave 10 days, 10 business days. The second group, we gave 10 days. So the next, the end of the second placement is the 27th of May.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Those are the questions I have.
Okay. I had a couple. On the school-based sheet.
Yes.
Can you give us just an idea or an example of what would be the capital allocation by school?
10,000 per school.
Okay.
240,000.
Okay. And what kinds of things do you think they would be spending these on?
We really leave that for the site-based decision, and we started that process with, through the enhancement millage. Last two years, we gave the full two years to use it. So what you've seen even tonight is how buildings have been able to use that for professional development, for additional resources to enhance learning within the classroom, sometimes for additional furniture. So all kinds of things, but we really want to leave that to the buildings to say, what is it that you need and have that ability to fund that for themselves.
That was one of the key things at transformation that everyone asked for, and I guess years ago, they all had it. It was something that they really wanted reinstated.
It gives them the flexibility, so it's.
And they're all unique.
And the PCAP journeys program, summer intake, what, I know what the journey program is.
That's at the high school.
Yes. What is the summer intake part of it?
So as we welcome students into the journey program, as they transition from grade eight to grade nine, there is a bit of a, kind of a registration process, orientation process, induction process, as we prepare students to start the year.
Okay, so it's just sort of the preliminary part of welcoming them?
That's correct, and then just a small amount of compensation for the staff who are supporting.
Kate, it's unrelated to the Journeys curriculum work that we do for some of our programs, so it's, they're both called?
Oh, I know. I know what it is.
Because I had that, I got confused about that.
I know what the program is.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. It's a, it's a wonderful program. So I was just curious what, what summer intake meant exactly, and I think that, you know, anything we can do to help support the students and the staff there is.
That's really good.
Are there other questions?
Okay, then we might want to just look at the key dates at the back of it. What'll be coming up, let's see here, just so everyone is aware. June 6th, we're going to have our Finance and Operations, and again, we're going to discuss some of the other funding sources. Expenditures, June 8th, we'll deliver the proposed budget to the Board of Education. June 12th, we'll have the public hearing that we always do that's required, and then June 21st, we'll have a Finance and Operations Committee meeting to finalize, and June 26th, we'll adopt.
We're hoping that by June 21st, we'll get final numbers from the state?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, it's gonna be as final as it's gonna be final.
Exactly. Okay.
So it might be conservative still.
Right.
Okay.
Does anybody want to go through the reconciliation?
I mean, most of the reconciliation is, is the ins and outs that occur to get to the budget process, as well as the, as well as the things that we've done as increases in the different processes. We didn't talk about all the details of this in FNO. We had a robust conversation about the general overall process.
Good.
Is that reconciliation helpful?
Yeah, it was great. It was great. There was just a couple of them that I didn't, I know now that these reductions were things that we had put as, as some of those things that were the, the assigned. And so maybe just, you know, just if we can call those out in some way, or put a note that says reductions are generally these things, because that was the only thing that jumped out at me.
All right. I want to thank Pam and her team. Vicky, there's a lot of work that always goes into building this budget, and they really have led our district in a wonderful process of transformation, inclusion, which is, has been so beneficial. I also want to talk about the administrative team. Pam mentioned it. Just seeing that transformation with this process over the years, going from a place where we didn't have a lot to share. And so when we initially had some money to be able to say, this is what I need, and really trying to hold on to that, but it was really a beautiful experience to see the trade-offs literally taking place. So elementary saying, yes, we need furniture, but maybe we can get this in phases, so that the high school can have some intervention support for students, and the same thing for middle school students. And so really looking at a K-12 perspective, I'm really proud of the work that the team did, and I really think it's going to benefit our students immensely and benefit our staff as well.
I'm pleased with this process now being our third year going through this, that it generally is smooth. I don't, I don't know if it's totally smooth for you, Vicky, but at least as far as where it comes to us at the board level, it's, it's, it's well-thought-out and very smooth, and we really appreciate all the hard work that you and the entire team does.
Say a lot of gray hair, but Vicky doesn't have it.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I think that was really good for us to get this look at, the budget right now, and we'll see what happens in the next few weeks, especially from the state.
That's right.
It's also been helpful in the discussions that we've had around the dynamic plan and how this aligns to the dynamic plan, and the priorities that we've established as a district going forward. So it's nice to see that be reflective across the entire administration and the budget that you bring forward.
Yes. Okay, well, now we're at letter F of our agenda, which is action items, and we have quite a few. The first section is teaching and learning action items. Many of these we looked at two weeks ago as our first readings. I think there's one that we have at the end of this section that is a first reading, but the others are final readings. So the first one is action item 1805, 147. Consider- Consider approval of resolution for CTE technology purchase. It's a final reading. And this did come to us two weeks ago. Could I please have a motion on this?
Yes, I'd like to consider approval of resolution for CTE technology purchases. This is a final reading, action item eighteen oh five, one forty-seven.
Support.
Okay, the motion was made by Member Keough and supported by Member Brooks. Is there a discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next is action item eighteen oh five, one forty-eight. Consider approval of resolution for Chromebook cases. This is a final reading.
I'd like to offer a resolution to consider approval of, consider approval of resolution for Chromebook cases. Final reading, action item eighteen oh five, one forty-eight.
Support.
I think that was a motion, right?
Sorry, motion.
Motion was made by Member Keough and supported by Member Brooks, again, I believe. Again, is there discussion on this?
I'm just excited about the Chromebook cases because they're really rough. This will make a huge difference and the new cases are really wonderful. So our, our middle school students are going to be very excited about this.
And I add my, we've participated in the program through high school. My son turns in his Chromebook shortly.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And thanks. It's really been terrific. So it's been very helpful and well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Vicki. Good.
And my, my middle school student is very disappointed that he is not participating in the pilot program to keep his Chromebook over the summer, but my high school student is very excited about it.
Well, then he graduates and guess what his graduation gift is? I have to come up with something, so.
There you go.
But it's been good, thank you.
Now the middle schooler has something to look forward to.
My high schooler is excited about the summer pilot program. I signed him up only because he doesn't have to remember to turn it in on Tuesday Friday or something. But it has been very useful.
Yeah, and they, they, they use them every single day, so losing them two weeks before the end of the school year is tough.
Well, that's the problem, yeah, because they have projects that they're still working on and that they need them for. At least my son does. I think he might be a little behind. Okay, so I didn't think we had any, well, this was our discussion. I know. So now, let's see, what can I do? I'm not going to be very creative, okay? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Okay, next up is action item eighteen oh five, one forty-nine. Consider approval of a resolution for the purchase of High School Hospitality Culinary Arts textbook. It's the Foundations of Restaurant Management and Culinary Arts. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the resolution for the purchase of the High School Hospitality Culinary Arts textbook, Foundations of Restaurant Management and Culinary Arts. Final reading, action item eighteen dash zero five dash one four nine.
Support.
The motion was made by Member Sider and supported by Member Mullen. Is there discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next up is action item eighteen oh five, one fifty. Consider approval of a resolution to purchase Galactic Edge for English learners in grades K through twelve. This is a final reading. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to consider approval of a resolution to purchase Galactic Edge for English learners in grades K through two. Final reading, action item number eighteen dash zero five dash one fifty.
Support.
Motion was made by Member Sider and supported by Member Brooks. Is there discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye, aye.
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 I can't wait to talk like a pirate day.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. And now we have a first reading. Consider approval of bid awards for K-12 music instrument, musical instruments and furniture. Dr. Bender, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, thank you. So this really is about purchasing instruments, sound equipment, piano cover, equipment stands and furniture, really to support the, the K-12 program. It's intended to replace instruments that are ten or more years old and are no longer able to be restored through repair. As the district enrollment stabilizes and begins to increase, we are experiencing an increase in enrollment in music courses, necessitating the need to increase the number of instruments available for the students to use. And so we ask the board's consideration for our first reading this evening.
Does anybody have any questions?
We talked about this in FNO. It was multiple vendors that were used as part of the process and we were able to do it such that we could choose the right vendor and the best option for each of the, the different products. So there's, I think, four different vendors that are part of this, of this purchase agreement, so.
Well, I think personally, I think this is something that's been needed for a while. When my son was in the Discovery Middle School band a few years ago, he borrowed an instrument. It was a bass clarinet, which is very large, and it was from Lowell Middle School, which I think maybe most, most people don't realize that before Discovery opened, we rented Lowell Middle School, so.
Now Johnson. It's actually since Levon.
I know that instrument was quite old.
Yeah, because what year was Discovery opened?
Two thousand and one or two?
Lowell was in the eighties, so.
No, Lowell was until Discovery was opened.
No, but I mean, it started in the eighties.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm, I'm glad to see that. Okay, now we're on to a letter G, which is the action items from finance and operations. And starting, well, all of these, I believe we saw at our last meeting two weeks ago.
Except for the last one.
Oh, you're correct. Yep, that one's a first reading also. Okay, so first one is action item eighteen oh five, one fifty-one. Consider approval of a resolution for the purchase of a John Deere Skid steer. It's a final reading. Could I have a motion, please?
I'd like us to consider approval of the resolution for the purchase of a John Deere Skid steer. Final reading, action item eighteen oh five, one fifty-one.
Support.
Motion made by Member Keough, supported by Member Brooks. Is there discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes six-zero. The next action item is eighteen oh five, one fifty-two. Consider approval of a resolution to purchase a Ford F-350 plow truck. It's a final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like us to consider approval of a resolution to purchase an F Ford, I'm sorry, a Ford F-350 plow truck. Final reading, action item eighteen oh five, one fifty-two.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Member Keough and supported by Member Brooks. Any discussion, questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next is action item eighteen oh five, one fifty-three. Consider approval of bid award for fresh pizza contract, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. It's a final reading. Is there a motion, please?
I'd like us to consider approval of the bid award for fresh pizza contract. This is the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Final reading, eighteen oh five, one fifty-three.
Support.
The motion was made by Member Keough and supported by Member Brooks. Does anyone have any questions? Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next is action item eighteen oh five, one fifty-four. Consider approval of a resolution for gym floor refinishing project at Plymouth High School. Final reading. Could I please have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like us to consider approval of a resolution for gym floor refinishing project at Plymouth High School. This is a final reading, action item eighteen oh five, one fifty-four.
Support.
Motion was made by Member Keough, supported by Member Brooks. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next is action item eighteen oh five, one fifty-five. Consider approval of Grand Rapids Building Services, GRBS, contract extension. Final reading. Could I have a motion, please?
Yes, I'd like us to consider approval of Grand Rapids Building Services, GRBS, contract extension. This is a final reading, action item eighteen oh five, one fifty-five.
Support.
The motion was made by Member Keough and supported by Member Brooks. Is there any discussion, any questions?
I'm marginally unhappy that we have to contract out as a school district, that we don't have our own employees. I imagine a day when we can employ all these people by ourselves and they can have pension and benefits of school employees. I mean, they're doing a good job. The employees are fine. It just makes me sad.
Okay, thank you. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Next is a first reading. Consider approval of resolution to assign fund balance, GASB, statement number fifty-four. And this is what we talked about earlier, I believe. Did you want to just refresh everyone's memory?
Well, we have done this like in the last couple of years and this is just for the, the board to express its intent to allow the district to assign. So what that means is any purchases that we can make this year from this year's budget, if they're not received by June 30th, they will be assigned. And so it'll just be reserved out of this year's fund balance and purchased.
Okay. All right. So we'll probably see that again in a couple of weeks.
June 12th.
Okay. Next up is letter H on our agenda, which is follow-up board questions. So I have as outstanding items, the third grade reading plan and resources to come to the spot committee meeting. Data on the number of days of instruction time missed for suspensions. I believe we got that in board notes.
We got it in board notes.
Was that what you were looking for?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can cross off the data on the number of days of instruction time missed for suspensions. And then the schedule for timeline for start time changes. We got that too. So we can cross that off. And then the outline of restorative practices implementation schedule. We got that, I believe, and. All right, and then from, those were outstanding from before. And then from our last meeting, I had data on the exit survey.
I think that we'll have that available. The exit survey closes.
Closes this Friday.
If we don't get it this Friday, it's board notes. We'll do it next week.
Holiday weekend.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be looking for that soon. Okay. All right. Next up, I have adjournment. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting tonight.
Okay. All right, the motion was made by Member Brooks and supported by Member Sider. All in favor of adjournings meeting, please say aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned. Got to make sure you guys are all awake.